All right, so it is February 17th. We are calling to order the Commission of Women meeting at 5:34.
Perfect. And roll call, Sarah Jones. Bonita Shoff here. Fay Moore.
Here.
Nicole Coleman here. Christina Isabel.
Here.
Joanne Inquist. Albertina Allen. Charlene Livsay. Veronica Martin.
Here.
Angie Nelson-Deutsch.
I'm here, but we gotta make sure you delete that email address. I had to search all over the place for it, so I no longer use that email.
Okay.
Can you, can you put in the, your email that you want me to use then? In chat? So I can make sure I have that, I'm sorry.
No problem.
I'm present.
Okay. So that is everyone. We will do the approval of our minutes. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes from last month?
I move, we approve the minutes for January 20th, 2022.
I second that motion. Fay Moore.
And then roll call vote. Bonnie Shoff.
Yeah, I.
Fay Moore.
Yes.
Nicole Coleman, yes. Christina Isabel.
Yes.
Veronica Martin.
Yes.
Passes by a roll call vote.
Great. We will, Char is not here for the Treasury report, so we will postpone that till next month. So we're gonna move on to our guest speaker. Thank you, Catherine. We're gonna let Nicole introduce you really, but I just wanna say that we're really excited to have guest speakers come into the Women's Commission so that we can reconnect with our community and find out what is going on, find out ways that we can help you, help other people get involved and to find the right information. So we really appreciate you being here tonight, thank you. And I'll start with Nicole here.
I'm gonna continue off of Christina. I wanna thank you as well. This is Catherine Mannion-Kelly. I know that the Women's Care Center works with a lot of women and babies within our community, and so I thought it was important that some, we need to connect with more organizations. And so just to learn more about the Women's Care Center and how we can help or where we can go as a Women's Commission with the, our goals this year.
State. Well, thank you. Thank you so much for having me. It's a joy to be here on this blustery day. I was shocked. I don't know if everyone else was shocked. Maybe you guys looked at the weather more than I did, but I did not expect this today, so here we are. But thank you. No, I am Catherine. I work with Women's Care Center. We have two centers in La Porte County. We have our center in La Porte. It's on, it's in Maple, on Maple Avenue. And we also have our center in Michigan City on Wabash, right by the outlet mall. Both, you'll see a big pink sign. That's kind of our signature, signature color, but it also really does, it's eye-catching. It really does attract, makes us very visible for women. It's different. You usually see a lot of blue or, you know, green or some other different color signs, but if you do see the big pink sign, it stands out. And so I did prepare just a little, a little PowerPoint just to kind of give you an overview, but please feel free to pop in. This does not need to be formal. Please feel free to pop in with any questions. But first things first, Women's Care Center has really become the go-to resource for all pregnant women in our community. It's, it's kind of amazing that one and every, every other baby born in La Porte County starts at one of our two centers. It's typically women that are coming to us for their initial pregnancy test or their initial ultrasound to figure out how far along they are. Maybe they don't know where else to go. Oftentimes, doctors' offices may, you have to wait a little bit longer if that's something that they're, they're pursuing right away. But typically, it's, it's just for those initial questions of, I, I'm pregnant, I don't know what to do, I don't know where to go. There's so many questions. And so they come to us. Women's Care Center is, is really accessible. We're open nine to five throughout the week, as well as we have evening hours in La Porte, open until 7:00 PM on Tuesdays and Thursdays. So we're just really accessible to women. You don't need an appointment. You don't need any paperwork or you don't need Medicaid or insurance to come through our door. We help you with all of that. So really what we try to do is just greet every single woman that walks through our door and what, and give her and help her with whatever obstacles or whatever things she needs to be able to have a healthy pregnancy and a healthy baby. That's our goal. And as I said, every other baby born in La Porte County does start at one of our two centers. We've really built a reputation in, in La Porte County, and we've become kind of the place women trust. We opened our centers in La Porte in 2003 and our center in Michigan City not too long after that. So we've been around for a while and it's, it's kind of become common knowledge among, among pregnant women to come to our center. I gave you some statistics on this, on this page where, these are 2021 statistics. The number of women served. Every, every one of these visits is in person. We didn't do a whole lot of Zoom luckily. Throughout COVID, we were able to be open throughout the entire duration of COVID. All of 2020, we were essential. So we still were able to serve women in person, obviously in creative ways, but we absolutely made it work throughout COVID. And now we're grateful to be a little bit more operations back to normal. But in 2021, 909 unique women came to our centers in La Porte County. Those women made 3,335 visits. Of those 909 women, 587 were newly pregnant. So the others were either pregnant a previous year or they had, they had their baby already, but they're still coming to our center for services. And we performed 837 ultrasounds in 2021. So really busy, lots of, lots of pregnant women, lots of women that need, that need our help. And I gave you a little bit of a, the demographic as well, which is pretty representative of the communities that we're in, which is common. Women's Care Center has centers throughout Indiana and actually throughout the country. And typically, you'll see a very similar demographic that we serve that's, you know, consistent with the population of the county. I will, I wanted to point out that most of the women, 79% of the women we serve are unmarried, which is typically an indicator of, who really do need a little bit more assistance. They might not have the same support system that others do. And our others are blessed to have other pregnant women. So it's, it's really important for, especially those women who aren't, aren't married to be able to come to Women's Care Center and find support that way. This kind of digs into our, our statistics a little bit more. Last page on statistics, I promise. But the Indiana State Department of Health publishes data on pregnancies in, in the state of Indiana. And so we take that data and compare it to our own data that we collect from women. And we're able to find some really interesting information, like what you see. And mention that one in two or every other baby born, what that is, is taking all of the births in La Porte County, comparing all of the births that are with, to, that we've tracked at Women's Care Center. And 46% of all births in La Porte County are Women's Care Center clients. So every other, or a little less than every other baby born starts at Women's Care Center. But digging into some of those more, the, the groups that may be a little bit more at risk for poor birth outcomes, you'll see a little bit higher, which is, which is to be expected as well. It's typically those women that need a little bit more support, and that's why we're here. 53% of the Latina moms, 61% of the Black or African-American moms, and 66% of all the unmarried moms in the county start at our center. So it's really just important that they do have a place to go and a place that's gonna guide them through the process. Now, what do they do when they come to Women's Care Center? I guess, why are they coming to us? I mentioned before that, that we are very accessible to women. We don't put any, anybody in a box. It's really important to not have any, any restrictions on the women we serve. If you find out you're pregnant or you think you're pregnant, you come to us, and, and that's okay. And we'll, we'll, we'll walk you through the rest of it. All of our services are free of charge. I mentioned, you don't need any paperwork. You don't need any insurance. That's something that we really, really make sure that we're not gonna create a barrier for women. Women, as I mentioned, do come initially for their first pregnancy test and ultrasound. And then the goal is for them to continue to stay with us and continue to walk with, we continue to walk with them throughout their pregnancy to help them have a healthier baby, a healthier pregnancy, and ultimately help put that child on the right path from the very beginning, from before they're born. So this is just a little bit of the breadth of what we offer. We offer that one-on-one counseling, and that can be anything. We really do strive to just help that woman wherever she is and whatever support she needs. And that could be really guiding her to help have her, have a healthy pregnancy. That could be all kinds of other things as well. Things like maybe job-related or education-related or, or relationship. Those are, those are really different depending on the woman and depending on what her needs are. We offer group classes, which is really important because a lot of times these women don't necessarily have a community. Like I said, they don't necessarily have the support system at home. And so offering those classes where women can find other women that are maybe in a similar situation, it really does help them feel not so alone. And it's really important to have that. That was something that, that we did have to limit a little bit more during COVID, but we are grateful to now be able to do in-person classes fully. And we're, we're looking to see that number increase. We have 15 parents a week right now. We're looking to see that continue to grow. Things like birth prep, prenatal education. We offer free prenatal vitamins to all women who come to have a positive pregnancy test to get them started on that right away. But of course, those important referrals for prenatal care being number one. Our goal is to get women in prenatal care early, knowing that that's a huge, a huge determinant of whether or not they're gonna have a healthy pregnancy and a healthy baby. Other things, Medicaid. That's a big thing for a lot of the women we serve. They don't have insurance. And so it's important for us to really walk with them through that process. We actually have Medicaid navigators that come to our centers every week. And so we block 15-minute appointments for, for, just basically filling up the navigator's time. The women know to bring what, what paperwork they need to bring for that, and, and it really works well. They're already familiar with Women's Care Centers, so they're not scared to go to some other office to get that set up. As well as WIC, which is another great resource for women that we serve. I mentioned ultrasound, and that's something that we promote early and often, knowing that ultrasounds really do help women bond with the life inside them, bond with that baby, to then take the additional steps needed to have a healthy pregnancy and a healthy baby, knowing that it's, knowing that it's real, knowing that there's something in there. And hearing that heartbeat really does help women bond and then take the additional steps, quitting smoking, stop drinking, eating healthier, going to prenatal care, whatever that may be. Other things, self-sufficiency training. This can be a spectrum of things depending on, on what their needs are. But really, like, like I mentioned, it's, it's so dependent on that woman's needs. And our goal is to just wrap them with all the support they possibly can need, as well as give them the referrals that they need. We offer baby basics, but also education all the way up through positive parenting, some more advanced subjects as well. And of course, we offer tangible assistance, tangible items, cribs, car seats, diapers, anything and everything you could possibly need for a baby, which is quite a bit. And also, all of our services are offered in Spanish as well. We have Spanish-speaking staff at both of our centers, which is critical for the population that we serve in La Porte County. And it works. It's, it's really interesting to find that women who come to Women's Care Center more often actually have babies born with higher birth weights. We've seen that, and this is based on our births in 2021, so last year, those women who made one to two visits had babies born, it's actually blocking here, let me see. There we go. Had babies born six pounds 13 ounces on average. But those women, those women who came five or more times had babies born, on average, seven pounds four ounces. And those are just really, really important ounces for little tiny babies. And it just shows that it's, it's not, it's, it's giving them those frequent touches, having that ability to just come to our center with, no matter what, really does help them take those initial step, additional steps needed to have a healthy baby. And, and it's not something that, it's not magic, but it's really just wrapping them around with, wrapping them with support, and then they, they do the rest. And this is the last slide. After the baby's born, that's really when our work begins. Oftentimes, women stay with us up until their baby's had enough to kindergarten. And that's, that's the goal. We really wanna be that community. We really want them to continue to have a place that's gonna support them and walk with them every step of the way and beyond. So we offer all kinds of education, as well as one-on-one education and, and support on all kinds of things. Budgeting, helping women become more self-sufficient, safe sleep, of course, the developmental milestones and looking at your baby's first year and beyond. Reading, of course, is critical. And, and providing books. And this is something that a lot of local resources love to donate. The local library gives us their used books. It's just really important because a lot of times these kids don't have books at home. And so if we can have them take home a couple of books every time they come to Women's Care Center, that's a win. Positive parenting that I mentioned, strong fathers, getting fathers involved in all of this. Of course, we're Women's Care Center, but there's absolutely fathers that, that have an opportunity to do a lot more too. And, and something that we have an opportunity to, to give some more support. And our newest class series is called Raising Kids with Character. And this is a little bit unique where it teaches our parents through modeling behavior how to raise children with these important character traits. Peace, kind, how to be peaceful, kind, creative, respectful, honest, and hopeful. And it really is practical. It's building things into their typical day, into a mealtime, into a bedtime routine, whatever that looks like. But the goal is to make it practical, doable, manageable. And of course, it, it really does have, make a difference. It really does work. So that's everything I had. But if there's any questions, I'm more than happy to address anything.
I would like to just make a couple of comments. Thank you for presenting that information. I don't know if the public realizes, La Porte County has one of the highest, you know, infant mortality rates. And, and we are ranked in the top for a lot of horrible health indicators, right? Associated to children. So I appreciate, you know, what, what you all do and, and how you're supporting those efforts. But, you know, I encourage people to always look at, you know, the Healthcare Foundation provides, you know, all of that data on the health indicator. So this is really helpful. And the numbers that you, the people that you're seeing is astronomical. So I appreciate that work. So thank you for being here today.
Thank you. And you're absolutely right. That's, that, La Porte County does have just some numbers that we really wanna reverse. And we really wanna continue to, to, to get better and better. And it is one baby at a time. And you're absolutely right. That's something that if you do support every woman and give them that, those additional, just that additional touch point to be able to have some place to go that may be outside of their typical prenatal care, it's helpful for that. So that's exactly right. But thank you for saying that.
I was also shocked to see how many of the babies you see in La Porte County and the moms. That's a large statistic, especially as Angie mentioned, the infant mortality rate. Like, if you're able to see, you know, approximately half, that's half the population that you're helping that are pregnant. But I do have a question regarding like the classes. Are the classes run by people within Women's Care Center? Or are you having volunteers from within the community?
A little bit of both. Nicole, yeah, a little bit of both. So we do have classes that we run, and, but we also do have some wonderful volunteers that do some of the classes. And that's kind of where we can be creative. Up front, those initial services are pretty, pretty cut and dry. It's, it's very much Women's Care Center training. But there's so many different needs in every community that we're in. La Porte County is, is no different. That if we do have community resources that are, are community people that are wanting to do a cooking class or wanting to do a, teach kids ballet, we really can be creative in that. And especially now that I feel we're, we're much more open in terms of what we're able to offer again at our center in terms of groups. It's, it's wonderful to have that. And community people really do step up. And it's fun to just have something different and fun for women that may not have access to that otherwise. So yes, absolutely.
So if, what would one need to do or who would one need to contact if they want their organization to provide some volunteer services for, for the, for the moms or the parents there?
That would be me. So Nicole does have my contacts, so please don't hesitate to reach out. I think it's wonderful. The more people that get involved, I think it's, the better. It's, it does, it really does take a whole community to help these numbers really improve, especially as Angie mentioned, the infant mortality in, in La Porte County is not something we, we are proud of, really. So it is, it does take a team. And so the more support Women's Care Center has, the more volunteers and people that are, that know about our services and advocate for our services now and talk about them with others, it's only gonna help. So yes, Nicole has my contact. And please, Nicole, feel free to share.
This is fantastic during this conversation. How are other organizations collaborating with you?
Definitely referrals. Yeah, no, it's definitely referrals. There's, we have a binder, a referral guide. Obviously, I mentioned prenatal care and WIC, and those are kind of the typical ones. But we have a referral guide that's inches thick. I mean, anything and everything is in that referral guide. And we, we go through the work of making sure it's up to date, making sure it's, they still offer these current services very, we do this often because it is just a critical piece of what we do. We all, we know we can't offer everything at Women's Care Center. But what we do have is incredible access early in pregnancy. And that's something that we, we don't take lightly. It's a responsibility, of course. We wanna make sure that they have every possible referral that's only gonna help them have a, have a healthy pregnancy, a healthy baby, and of course, build a nurturing, loving family. So we refer is a big thing, referrals. Yeah. Well, thank you. Like I said, Nicole has my contact. So please, if there's other questions, don't hesitate to reach out. I'm more than happy to answer anything specific that you do have. But I do appreciate all of your time today. And you're listening, and your questions, all very good. So thank you all for, for having me today. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Have a good rest of your meeting. Enjoy, enjoy each other. And like I said, please don't hesitate to reach out. But thank you again.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was, that was good. It was good. Interesting, maybe how we kind of come back to the subjects that she was talking about maybe in our next meeting, in the next agenda, working in some things like that. But we should continue on with our agenda. Unless there's any feedback at this moment that anyone needs to address regarding our guest speaker.
I think going forward with the new, with the agenda is great because it also, like, looking at our goals for 2020, it does pop back up.
Great. Okay. Good. So moving on to our new business, which is, are reviewing the, the goals, which basically I just created a little summary of what was discussed at the November meeting. We do know that this year we do need to create that fundraising opportunity for us and to continue to do the good work that we do. From what I could gather from things, there were four different options of possibilities. But, but what I did realize this year from when Fay was passing on information to me is that the Women's Commission is hitting 10 years. This is the 10th year of the commission. And I think it's a fantastic time to celebrate this commission and all of the great work that has been done in that 10 years. Also to really highlight and honor the past presidents and committee member commissioners. And Fay, Fay was one of the original members and wrote our, the mission. And I'm, I think that mission is just quite fantastic. It's such a, it makes me feel good every time I look at it for the work that we do. So definitely wanna thank Fay for being involved this long.
I didn't write the commission, Pat Boy and myself. And I think Angie was on that group also at that time.
Wow, it has been 10 years ago, huh?
Based on, there's a state Women's Commission. And so we were involved with them also. So Pat, my Angie, Jerry Jones, and a couple of other women in Michigan City, we would attend several state meetings and throughout the state, Indianapolis, Porter County, mostly Porter County, Balbo, and Chesterton. Because at that time, they were also trying to form a Women's Commission. And so we kind of came up with that based on the state's commission.
And just as you say that, I think I had just rolled off of the, the council at that time. We, I think we started the discussions and then Pat Boy kept it going. So she kept the torch going after that, so.
Thank you, ladies.
Yeah, thank you. And Angie, I did not know that you were involved then either. So this is fantastic information.
Yeah, yeah. I, I didn't draft it, but like I said, I was on the commission. I mean, I was on the council through 2011. And then Pat was still on the, on the board, on the city council, and she's the one that led the charge.
Nice. So see, we've gotta celebrate. We gotta celebrate all these people who've done great things and have put us into this place, right? And I, and I think that also offers us the, a good opportunity to do the fundraiser, right? But just to, just keep talking about those fundraiser, raising options because there were other things mentioned, such as a partnership with another organization, a virtual silent auction, or a celebration of Women's History Month, 100 plus two, was one of the suggestions. I don't know if we can do all of those. So I think we gotta narrow it down. One of the things that I think we would need to do is create a subcommittee to help kind of push this forward in terms of location, budget. I have the budgets. I have from, and some information on the past fundraisers. I have budget information from 2014, 2015, and 2016. So when we, if this commission can be formed, we have some, some work that we can look at to see what we did then, how we did it, what the general expenses were.
The problem is, I think, I think the biggest problem is we just don't know how this COVID is gonna go and how long we're gonna be. And so it makes it kind of hard to try to meet and plan because we have to follow the open door laws. And it has to be, you know, a public meeting. And if three or more of us are meeting to discuss this. But I, I think in between our sessions, we can kind of think about it. What I, what I've worked on, ladies, Kathy Dennis, when she was the chair, I think she started the book to pass on to the, to the previous chairs. And I forgot I even had that book. um to pass on to the to the previous chairs and I forgot I even had that book. Bonnie had passed it on to me. So I kind of tried to bring that book up to date and then I passed it on to Christina. And then I did a more a little bit more research on the presidents. So but uh could you Christina, could you uh name the presidents that we had in the past and maybe?
There've been seven presidents. Sharon Karns was the um for four terms, four years, Deb Chubb for two. Then we went to single terms with Kathy Dennis, Dahlia, Bonnie, Shaq, um Faye Moore, and then now myself.
So I would like us to go back to those two and three term people being presidents because we got more accomplished, I think, when they, you know, when they continue the terms than when we change every year. Uh because then that new person is starting afresh and it's hard to to, you know.
And I recommend that with any board. I mean, having uh one year terms, we uh ran into that in another board I was on and it it is, uh it can be disruptive, especially with the the work that you all have been doing. It's a little different. Um it's not like um some boards are very process oriented and to and just doing certain things. You are are actually doing programs and really, you know, programming and fundraising. So you you almost need um some stability, you know, in in your charter or, you know, as far as what our ordinance says, and we might want to think about that and look at that because um you're a little different from some commissions because you are doing like speci- specific work and programming that others are not. They're very driven by ordinances and codes, you know, planning commission. Well, they do certain things. You know, here, you're looking at long-term programming to impact the community. So uh you know, I I definitely think that having maybe two-year two-year terms would be a an ideal situation. So if you you all want me to make that change at some point, just let me know. I'll make the amendment.
No, I do think that's true. I think when there is uh consistency, you can, you know, potentially accomplish more. So that that does make sense. Um so I like that we're kind of hitting that conversation here. I do have to say that the finance, like the fundraising and all that stuff was um when I was trying to coordinate the fundraiser in 2018, I had gathered all that information together so we could do it and then we didn't end up doing it in 2018. So I know at that time, we were we wanted to honor, we had about five women that we were honoring, which I think we don't need to go backwards to look at what it was because we're not this this will be a different year. I guess the thing is to understand if we want to do this dinner awards in collaboration with someone else or if well, I guess what you said, we don't know because of COVID.
I I I would still suggest thinking about it. I mean, you know, we have uh Women's Equality Day in August. You know, that's a little ways out that we may, you know, maybe we think about it from a two-pronged approach. We identify a location and then if, you know, we kind of plan in parallel, maybe with the virtual versus in-person, you know. I've seen a lot of hybrid things. Um and maybe there's an opportunity, but that gives us a little time. Uh but Women's Equality Day could be a a perfect day for something like because that's far enough. It's August uh twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
Actual date and it's on a Friday.
Oh, that's good.
So. And and you talked about open door law as far as like um commit you can have an event committee, subcommittee. Um you don't necessarily um you what you need to do with the commission is if you're going to set a budget and come up with some parameters, the the commission can vote on it, but then you can have a subcommittee that works on the logistics. You don't have to do that every month so that so that you can because you we would never get anything done if. But um there's a we do it that way is that maybe at the next meeting votes on doing something and and putting forth a little money or, you know, do some research, everybody, and then present a proposal that's voted on, then that allow that subcommittee will kind of go off and do what they need to do without having to get approval every single time every month.
Got it. Okay, that's good. Sounds good. Sounds good.
Goodbye, you're kind of quiet over there.
Yes, well, I'm listening and I'm thinking about this, but um and but I do think because another organization I'm in, we for annual meeting last year, we planned it in person. We had all of that, all the logistics arranged, knowing that it might have to be virtual and it was virtual, of course, but it was, you know, we had an out-of-town um guest speaker who, you know, who was on Zoom and everybody was on Zoom and we voted and elected officers and did everything that we needed to do. So um we could do something like that and although it was not a fundraiser and I can't remember. I know there have been some fundraiser, virtual fundraisers that I've seen in the past, you know, year or two. I can't remember really how any of them have worked, so we might need to figure something like that out. That might have to be our backup, you know, is that we can do that.
And I think Angie is, I think August is a great time to look at as well because it is summer and that's typically like looking at the past two years, that's when like things have loosened up a bit enough. Or, you know, you can host something outside or there's a lot more options within this area. And then also it's typically a good time, especially since, you know, the event days kind of fall together and it would work.
Yeah, I'm really I I really like that. I mean, I've always loved our luncheons for the Women's Quality Day, but if we can just like you know, create this other event during that time period, it seems like ideal. So we'll put that on our potential docket for the next conversation too. Should we continue on with other things that we're on? Anything else for the fundraising actions yet? Okay, moving on.
Christina, would you want to um have a vote on this right now, like Angie had suggested? And we could even start meeting this coming month if you want to. Get some fight to make some, you know, start looking at options at least.
I'm for it. Yes, let's do it.
Okay, I move. Okay, I move that the Women's Commission start planning an event to be held on or around August twenty-sixth, which is Women's Equality Day this year, twenty twenty-two.
I second that motion.
Sorry, writing down. Okay, roll call vote. Bonnie, Shaq?
Yes.
Faye Moore?
Yes.
Nicole Coleman? Yes. Christina Isabel?
Yes.
Veronica Martin? Veronica?
Because I'm mute.
I added on. I added on mute. Yes.
And and Nicole, one thing that you can do too is um you can request from Caleb. He'll send you the the Zoom link directly to you so that if you ever want to go back and watch it, you can without having to worry about Facebook.
Thank you.
Great. That is excellent. Um our second category um was promoting history with a focus on Native Americans and African Americans. I did find out that Kathy Dennis is working on a um a a project in May in front of the city hall will be um a dedication of a Native American. Um I think it was going to be a sculpture, but now it's something a little bit more like a plaque. So in May, there is the May first Friday is going to be um an event focused on the Native American history in our area. Um I I've asked Kathy if she would be interested in coming in to speak with us and she said yes. Um so that was just one bit of research I did in terms of that category. And if anyone else has other things they would like to suggest or throw out at this moment. This is about promoting history and I know we will be involved with the Naomi Anderson sculpture or presentation.
I think for if we have Kathy Dennis come and talk, I think it'd be important that we also kind of share that with people in the community that are like either home educators or teachers. So therefore they can gain a little more information and knowledge because that's very educational.
So maybe we could try to have her come in March or April.
That's good. And I also know um that the Tryon Farm Institute is also trying to initiate an education project on the um history of the land there at Tryon and the Native American um connections as well. Um so potentially, and I've kind of put Kathy and, you know, she lives at Tryon Farm too, so I put the organization, you know, both of them together to see if we can make something else bigger happen as well. So and if anyone else knows anything else, you know, around town.
Christina, oh Christina, I was thinking too that since we've been working on and making helping make public the Naomi Anderson Project and also the Anita King Project. I think I think this is a good role for us to have when we are um if we are seen as a source for um history of the area and and honoring that and recognizing that. Because I don't think there are very many other organizations or at least city commissions that, you know, that really do that. So I think that's a good role for us, one of our roles.
We just have to remember not to step on the Historical Society's uh, you know. Now and see what. Because yeah, you are working with Anita King, am I correct, in Historical Society?
I don't know, but I think that our role has been um mostly to give funding to the to these organizations, but uh yeah, and I think that Historical Society is doing more, maybe more education, but we are supporting the um historical um programs.
And 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 just with that intention and focus, that would be a good thing to to kind of acknowledge and recognize at our fundraising event that 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 is part of our mission. So I think we're we're kind of developing some kind of key um values right now that seem important. So I'm gonna keep continuing because it's already six sixteen. Sorry, I'm better keep. Uh education, um just interested in any special project research. Sarah couldn't be here today. Um having problems with internet, so hopefully we'll get a I'll I'll reach out to her to see if we can just find out what is happening in the education world. We had a women's health priority, so we're doing the good work right now of um, you know, just trying to find out what organizations around us are doing. And maybe we might find that we do want to raise more funds for something specific, right? Like a real big women's health initiative and what could that be? And in in our fundraising capacity, we could say we need this much to do something good, you know, big and and and, you know, continuing that conversation there. The marketing and outreach was again always one of our our topics and that's just getting a word out about who we are, what we do and and then having the guest speakers to educate and inform us and the community. So those are a lot of the the goals that we had uh in November, which I think we're we're kind of aligning and um moving forward on some things. Any com- other conversation you did?
I think this is a great list that that um came up with. It's nice to see it on paper. So like this is actually a great list and having speakers every month, I think, will show, you know, the community, you know, exactly the work that you all are doing. So I I think this is great.
Yeah, yeah. So then that's why I came up with that guest art speaker list. If you just kind of, if you want to look at that at all, you can we can add anything at any time. Um as of right now, I don't have anyone like scheduled for next month just because I wanted to hear what we wanted to find out about as a commission, all of us. Um um I do know that um, you know, I don't want to get us too far off of what our topics are for the year too, right? So I mean, I put a lot of content in there that could send us in a lot of directions. So we I think we need to streamline, you know, it's my first one. I'm gonna throw it all out.
You're doing a great job.
But you you know, so if you want to add anything at any time, um just let's do it and as as a group that's here right now, is there anyone that we want to ask to come next week? Specifically?
We already going to ask Kathy Dennis either to do March or April.
Oh, yeah, next month is March.
And April is after that, so.
Oh, my gosh.
But I mean, they could throw out a name and and we can ask them for uh May, June.
Okay, I will reach out to Kathy to see if if she'd be interested for next month.
And it might be too a good time. I mean, even if it was April uh to to reiterate to before that, you know, presentation, but next month still might be a good time to kind of bring up a little bit more about the history of Naomi Anderson with everything that's because we have dates.
Yeah, we got uh Bonnie's going to be talking in on the old business about Naomi.
I got something for Bonnie too that I'm gonna ask her. Hate to put on a platform, I am.
Okay, well, we'll so again, there's that list. Um I hope you got a chance to look up that the Edwin's Leadership and Restaurant in Cleveland because I think Michigan City is a prime city for a program like that. If we had um, you know, had someone who had that same drive but to find restaurants and um ex um prisoners to be involved, it would just hit so many boxes in creating opportunity and doing something good. So anyway, I'm gonna move on though, but I hope you do take a look at that. Now, we had a board, um Angie's been organizing this boards and commission workshop. The next one is February twenty-third at five thirty. Um I went to the last one and it was very helpful on going over the open door policies um as as well as what how to run the meetings. And then the next one on the twenty-third will will bring us into the Roberts rules. So hopefully um you can attend that on the twenty-third. Angie, do you want to say anything about it or?
No, I think I thought it went well. Um you know, the goal was just to continue to do those. Um we we may go to once a quarter, but for these first few months, it's probably just important is, you know, boards and commissions are getting new officers and things just to continue to do it um, you know, monthly until questions go away, right? But I think it's um the good thing is I know um uh Councilwoman Dahlia Sheek is also mentioned. We're probably gonna send the link out for the last um Zoom so that we can start sharing that more with the with the uh different boards and commissions. But next one is about Roberts rules, but also uh Controller Hoffmaster wanted to um have a few moments to talk about um accounting um as well because boards and commissions, um there's paperwork involved in in attendance and things like that. And it would be nice to have some consistency across all the boards and commissions to to turn in or submit, you know, information. So um she's gonna take a few minutes at the beginning of the uh the session.
Thanks. It was very helpful. So um and now let's get to the Naomi Anderson project update, Bonnie.
Okay, well, um it's getting very exciting now because everything is coming to a head in just a few weeks. The um unveiling ceremony is going to be um Saturday, March nineteenth at two two o'clock PM at the uh um the park. What is the name of the park? Faye? I can't.
West Scott. West Scott.
Charles R. West Scott Park. I I do know it. Um it's at two o'clock and then followed by a reception at the Besnick Center for the Arts. And um we're going to be able to thank all of our uh sponsors and donors and the all I can say is this city has come out and supported this project beyond way beyond our wildest dreams. Can't can't believe it. This is this is individuals and churches and nonprofits and businesses and this the city government and the libraries. Everybody is supporting it and um we've had a lot of in-kind donations from businesses that have made just a huge difference. So um we and we have and now we're getting some of the things that we've been talking about and planning for for the last almost two years, but we just received some eight-foot-tall um retractable retractable banners. Those came in this week. We have um Those came in this week. We have, um, light pole banners coming. We did, this is very exciting, we paid for flights for two of Naomi's descendants to come here from California for the unveiling. So they'll be here for the unveiling. Her, Naomi's, um, great-granddaughter and great-great-granddaughter will be here. So, yeah, that's exciting and, and fun to think about. And we finished, um, putting together a digital archive, um, housed at Purdue Northwest. And in fact, on Saturday, two days from now, at two PM, uh, Joseph Coats and Carnesek Harns and myself are, um, giving a presentation about Naomi's life and history and her significance in history. And Carnessa will be doing, uh, poetry reading and dramatic reading about her. So, uh, that's at two o'clock, Michigan City Public Library. And I hope that, uh, some of, that you can attend that. And, uh, here, I, I'm going to lose my voice by the time I'm done with that speech, I think. Because I have a lot to say about Naomi. There's a lot to tell about her, so. So I hope you can, can be there for that, can join us for that. And, um, and then after the unveiling, after everything is done about that, then we're going to start doing, I'm not going to, but Judy Jacoby and Joseph Coats are planning to give, um, offer guided tours to school groups and, uh, groups of adults or anyone. They have, um, some really neat giveaway gifts for, um, students that are, aren't related and have a lot of information about Naomi built into them. And so there's just a lot of things coming together all at the same time. And it will be so good to have it, have it done, but it's so good to do all these things too, so. So that's what's happening with, uh, Naomi. And I want to thank the Women's Commission again for their, um, their important donation. One of the most substantial ones, we, we received five thousand dollars. So that was, um, and that has, uh, we don't know exactly what that has gone toward. But that's, um, been an important part of, of our finances and affording the things that we're, that we wanted to get.
The times for Saturday at the library?
It's at two o'clock on Saturday. Is that what you asked?
Yep, okay. Thank you so much, Bonnie. It's amazing the amount of research and work that you've done, as well as everyone else on the Anderson Committee. That's just incredible, just really exciting. Thank you.
Yeah, and, and can I add something? And Bonnie, I will be reaching out to you, um, for, to see if you would like to, um, since it's, um, uh, we have Women's, um, Day and all of that going on prior to that. Um, or I have a time, a ti- a time slot on my radio show for all things Michigan City. Maybe we can talk about Naomi Anderson, um, in that week, so I'll send that information too.
Okay, great, yeah, yeah.
That way you don't have to lose your voice all at once. You can talk about it on the, on radio, on Facebook Live.
I love that. The more people can hear about her, the better, right? So it's awesome. Okay, um, now we're moving down to six twenty-seven, our pu- uh, public comments. Okay, uh, council liaison comments?
Um, don't have anything. I think I talked all, all the way through. But I will say, you know, again, and I'll be saying this to all the, all the commissions, this, um, thank you for your commitment to these, to our, our boards and commissions and, um, your time to expand and your effort, um, on these commissions, I appreciate.
Um, any commissioners' comments? Let's see, anything, I'll put it in. Um, Veronica, is there anything you'd like to share with us?
Not at this time.
I, I keep forgetting I have the.
Well, I just wanna say that the La Porte County NAACP, we now have a website. And it's, um, you can just put in La Porte County, uh, NAACP, unit thirty-sixty-one. And we will be posting all kinds of stuff up there. And we have a Trailblazer event coming up. And, um, I think it's gonna be in May, if I'm not mistaken. This two, year is going so fast, but it's gonna be in May. And we're also gonna be offering a youth scholarship. Um, we're trying to get that together now, a scholarship committee for a youth that's in high school. Um, and that eligibility for that will be up on that, uh, website as well. And, um, as well as, uh, application to join the NAACP. All of that will be on our website and, um, so I'm just hoping that you guys will go and, and look at it. And also I did wanna add with Naomi Anderson, um, Cheryl Chapman wrote a book and, and Cheryl and Vanessa, Cheryl and Carnessa, um, did a, was it a YouTube presentation? That's on the Celebrated Naomi Anderson, um, Facebook page. So please go and listen to the story of, um, Naomi Anderson on Celebrated Naomi Anderson Facebook page, and please like it and share.
All right. Okay, where are we? Let's see, um. Uh, Nicole, uh, do you have anything for the nonprofits, women's issues or?
Um, I'm just glad that I was able to bring on Women's Care Center. I'm still talking to Dune Brook about possibly coming and talking because they also work with a lot of families in our area. Um, so I think it's nice to learn and also promote these organizations within us.
All right. Well, we hit it right at six thirty, so, um, thank you guys so much. We will, um, adjourn and then our next meeting is March seventeenth. Um, and hopefully everyone can make it. All right. Thanks, guys. Bye.
Thank you. Bye.